Okay, I just show it six o'clock. I will call the common council meeting for July 21st, 2025 to order everyone. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Jim Magless here.
Dan Ballard.
Here.
Bruce McIntosh.
Here.
Neil Moody.
Here.
Dan Beer.
Here.
Mayor Wright.
Here.
Jim McDonald.
Here.
Okay, reading of the minutes from the July 7th meeting. Any changes, questions, concerns from the minutes from that meeting? Bring down, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I have Dan. Wasn't you?
Sure Dan is staying. Thank you Dan. Alright, community recognition award. John John, I see you in the crowd.
It's mine.
Yeah, Councilman Ballard. Alright, thank you Jan. Thank you John John. Okay, under new business, um, new business, we have, I'm sorry, under old business, we have a date set for our budget hearings. Think you guys come up with some dates, so?
This year's budget hearing dates is going to be August 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th, starting at 3:30.
Anybody have any questions about those? Okay, Jim? Alright, next on the agenda under new business is the Baker Tilly update. We have Paige online. Paige, how are you this evening?
I'm good. And you?
Yep, good. Thanks for joining us. Everybody here Paige okay tonight? Okay, let's hear what we got going.
Um, is there a way to share my screen with the report? You know?
I do not know. If you can't do it, let me...
I don't see an option on my side to share it.
Hold on, just a second. I go try, you know?
Okay.
Paige?
Yes?
Are you gonna share the, the financial plan?
I was gonna share the financial plan report.
Okay.
But if we, if we can't share it, I can just talk through it and...
Okay. And are you gonna touch base on the safety tax in 2028?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I think I have the ability to share, so...
Greg, Greg can do something. Who's saying I did it?
Sherry.
Oh, Sherry did it, okay.
Okay.
I'm still trying to figure it out, but I know, just a second.
No problem.
Unfortunately, I cannot figure it out. So, um, I'm just gonna talk about the report, and I did email it last week on Friday evening, but I understand that you all did not receive it. I don't know if your email blocked it, but we'll try some way to get it to you. So, the report I want to go through tonight is the draft comprehensive financial plan. So, I want to first talk about some of the legislative changes. Um, so first of all, net assessed value, the legislation modified the homestead deductions, and those will be phased in over a six-year period. Uh, the legislation also introduced additional credits for homesteads. It provides deductions for 2% properties, which we have not had in the past. So, 2% properties would be agricultural land, long-term care facilities, and residential rental properties. So, those types of deductions we've never had. Now we will have them. They'll be phased in over a six-year period. It increases, uh, the de minimis exemption threshold for business personal property. So, right now, it's 80,000. So, anything under 80,000 is non-taxable. But, starting next year, anything, I'm sorry, starting in 2027, anything under $2 million is non-taxable. Um, there's also some other adjustments made to assessed value. So, what this is gonna do for, for all local units of government in the state is slow down the growth of your net assessed value. In some instances, your net assessed value could decline. But I think, I think what we're expecting is just slowing down the growth of that assessed value. So, you know, when your assessed value doesn't grow as fast as your property taxes levies are growing, that your tax rates can start to increase, which will also increase your circuit breaker tax credits. And in fact, um, in this report, which I will talk to you about, we do have preliminary estimates of property tax reductions due to those circuit breaker credits going up. So, so in essence, there will be more credits issued to taxpayers, and that causes a reduction in your property tax revenue. Um, as far as your maximum levy is concerned, we do know that in 2026, the levy growth factor is 4%. That has been certified. Had the legislature not, um, capped that growth, we would have expected to see somewhere between 5 and 5.5%. So again, it is, it is 4% for 2026. For years beyond 2026, we expect the same formula that's been used in the past to determine levy growth. Um, right now, it's only capped by 6%, and that's just legislation that's been in place for years. But it's not to say that the legislature could go in and, and perhaps cap that again in 27. Starting with the 2030 budget, so in 2029, when you're preparing your 2030 budget, if you want any growth at all in your levy, you will have to have an additional public year. So now, I want to move on to the property tax revenue piece. So, preliminary estimates from Legislative Services Agency shows that the city of Princeton will have a property tax revenue reduction of about 218,000 in 2026. 2026 will be the least impacted of your budget years, because again, all of these legislative changes are gonna phase in over the next six years. Um, and again, this is very preliminary. Um, as I've stated before, Baker Tilly is working on a model that incorporates all these various changes, and we're very close to getting that model complete. Once it's complete, we can give you some more accurate estimates, but I think this is good for you as you go in to work your 2026 budget. Local income tax, we've got big changes coming down the road. The whole, local income tax structure is going to change. So, you've got, um, income tax right now, we've got public safety, economic development, and certified shares. Those will be eliminated by the end of 2027. In its place, you, the council, will have the ability to adopt a 1.2% municipal lit. That municipal lit will need to cover the costs that you are currently paying now out of lit economic development and lit public safety. We assume all of those costs are gonna shift over to the general fund, starting in 2028. And I, I will tell you what that 1.2% will generate. But before I get to that, um, also know that the county can adopt their own 1.2% lit. It doesn't impact your lit at all. You can take the full 1.2%. The county can have their full 1.2%, but the county can also adopt a fire protection and EMS local income tax. That total rate is like 4%. And that particular tax is distributed to, uh, municipal fire departments, fire territories, fire districts, and at the county's discretion, it can also be distributed to, um, volunteer fire departments and township fire departments. The way that it's gonna get distributed is it's based on population and the service area, the square miles of the service area. So, we can calculate that to determine, you know, how much the city of Princeton might get of that. But again, that's just for fire protection and EMS. That's not for any other public safety service. And again...
Quickly Paige, that, and that excludes the police, right?
That excludes the police. You, you would have to cover the police services out of your city services lit that you can adopt that 1.2%. But also note that it's gonna be up to the county to adopt that fire protection EMS and not required to adopt that. So, that will be under county control. Also, there's a non-municipal lit that the county can adopt, and that's for townships and libraries primarily. Um, can also be for some other special districts like airport authorities. And then, of course, the municipalities with a population of less than 3,500, the county can adopt one lit rate for those, and it gets distributed out based on population. So, it's not 1.2% for each of those small municipalities. That's in total. And then it gets split out among those smaller municipalities. So, here's, here's a big difference, is that, right now, every county has one lit rate, and everybody pays the same lit rate. When we have this new structure, I can pay a different rate if I live inside the city of Princeton versus outside of the city of Princeton. There can be different rates depending on where you live, but no single taxpayer can pay more than 2.9%. So, if we add up all the rates that are available to the county and you, it actually adds up to 3%. So, the county is gonna have to be responsible for making sure that no single taxpayer pays more than 2.9%. So, where I see the adjustments getting made is probably gonna be in the fire protection EMS and the non-municipal and the smaller municipality rates. That's where I think adjustments will likely be made, unless the county just doesn't go to their full 1.2%. So now, what does that mean for the city of Princeton? So, we did a rough calculation. First of all, note, please note that this lit rate is gonna be based on the adjusted gross income of those people that live within the city of Princeton. Those actual numbers are not available yet from the Department of Revenue, but we have, we have got, we've calculated an estimate based on the number of households, uh, from the US Census Bureau, and then also the mean income of people living in Princeton. So, the total, the amount that we get if you adopt the whole max of 1.2% is 2,453,000. That's actually about 94,000 more than you're getting now. So, we don't see a loss there. I, I kind of wish it would generate more revenue, but there, there isn't a loss if you compare it to 2025 certified. So again, about 2,453,000, you currently get in 2025 about 2,360,000 between your lit economic development, your lit public safety, and your lit certified shares.
Paige, one quick question. What was that median income, uh, figure you guys used?
We used, um, I'm sorry, we didn't use the median. I messed up. We used mean income, which is the average income, and that is 70,595.
I think that, I think that might be a little high. I think we got other data, maybe from economic development, that, um, that might be a little aggressive. So, we might dial that back, but we'll get, we'll get those numbers. And like you said, we can't really figure it until we get the IRS numbers or federal numbers.
But, but the way, the way that you figure that and the way that, like, the economic development figures it is different. I think that's correct.
Yeah, it was different. And I think we used, um, 2023 data, and I can't remember what, what they used. Um, but yeah, we're seeing all different kinds of estimates out there, but that's what we're using. We're using the mean income, uh, times the number of households minus those households that are receiving public assistance income, because that's not taxable. So, um, hopefully it comes out, when we get the actual numbers, hopefully it comes out to where you're at, um, seeing the loss of local income tax. Um, so moving on then, and I really wish I could figure out how to share my screen, but, um, so, in 2026, as I mentioned before, we feel at least preliminarily that your circuit breaker credits could go up by 218,000. So, just let me put that in perspective for you. So, you right now have circuit breaker credits that are equal to almost 30% of what you levy. So, you levy about almost $4 million, but you only collect about 3.7, or I'm sorry, I said that wrong. You levy about $5 million or closer to $6 million, but you only collect about 3.7 because of those circuit breaker tax credits. So, those circuit breaker credits right now in 2025 is about 1.4 million. So, that's a lot. What that means is, if we didn't have circuit breaker credits, you'd have an additional 1.4 million to operate. But now, as we go into 2026, uh, you're gonna have about 1.5 million in what I'm gonna call the normal circuit breaker, pre-legislation circuit breaker, and then add on another 218,000 on top of that. So, SDA 1 is that gonna create a huge shortfall, at least in the initial years, but you're already experiencing a pretty big shortfall. So, what does it look like as far as that property tax revenue, what you're actually gonna receive? In 2025, you're gonna receive 3,696, and this is for all of your funds combined. In 2026, we do anticipate it will go down to 3,579. So, almost $100,000. Now, as we get into 27, 28, and 29, you're gonna see a gradual increase, but it's not gonna be much. So, 2026, I said 3,579. 2027, going up to 3,655. 2028, 3,864. And then you should break the 4 million there in 29. So, even if you didn't really listen to all those numbers I just threw out there, what, what's happening is, CINPO 1's going to slow the growth of your property tax revenue. You should still get some growth, but it's not gonna be, you know, the full maximum levy growth quotient. For you, it never has been. Well, at least if you had circuit breakers, because you are so heavily impacted by circuit breaker tax credits. Moving on to, just to give you a little bit of information about your net assessed value and your tax rates. So, your tax rates have actually decreased by 8% since 2022. So, in 2022, your property tax rate was 1.6861. It is now 1.5510. So, you, your tax rate has gone down, but the reason why it's gone down is because your assessed values have gone up. So, during that same time period from 2022, your net assessed value has gone up almost 33%. So, you know, we know that taxpayers have been upset about their tax bills going up, but the reason why tax bills have gone up is because property values have gone up. Your tax rates have actually gone down. So, that's not what's causing the increase in the tax bills. It is the growth of net assessed value. So, that's what this property tax relief legislation is supposed to do, is to slow down that growth of net assessed value. But again, when that is slowed down, tax rates could potentially start going up, which is gonna cause issues with your circuit breaker credits. Again, right now, it just, it's looking like maybe $200,000 a year of impact to the city of Princeton due to the property tax relief portion of the legislation. Um, some other things to talk about is, you, um, are gonna have until October 1st of 2027 to adopt your municipal lit. You cannot adopt it anytime before July 1st, 2027. That's been a question we've been asked several times, due to various reasons. People, some, some municipalities want to adopt it now, but you're not gonna be able to do that, um, until July 1st, and then no later than October 1st of 2027. Um, we do note, and, and I will try to get this report to you some way, we need to ask your IT person not to have the report blocked, so I can give it to you. But anyway, we do have concern about the fire fund. I know you probably have that same concern as well, but it is going negative. And I think, you know, without any other sources of revenue, you're gonna have to provide additional support from the general fund, um, for fire services. Um, and that's something we'll probably need to talk about as far as, do you want to keep the fire in a separate fund, or do we want to bring it back into the general fund? So, we can talk about that during, during budget time to see how you want to handle that. But I think of all the funds that we have here, that's probably the most concerning, um, is, is just continued sustainability of that fire fund. Um, road funding, so House and Road Act 1461 is allowing us to put 60% in non-restricted and 40% in restricted if you meet these two qualifications. And one is that your average pavement quality rating, it's also called a Pacer rating, has to be a minimum of six. And then also, not more than 15% of the highways are classified as being in failed condition. So, if you meet those two qualifications, then starting July 1 of 2026, you can put 60% of your motor vehicle highway distribution in non-restricted and only 40% in restricted. So, that's helpful. I know it's only, you know, an additional 10%, but I think it is helpful.
What year is that Paige? I'm sorry?
Uh, it starts July 1, 2026.
Thank you.
Nothing like starting it in the middle of the year.
I know. That's okay.
Um, and then also, um, if you are, um, it lowers the community crossings grant match from 25% to 20% for municipalities that have a population of less than 10,000. So, that's helpful as well. Um, you do have some, now I'm moving on to debt issuance. So, you've got, um, lease rental bonds that mature January 1st, 2027. So, you can think about maybe you great issuing another bond, so that rate doesn't fall off. And I think you're, maybe you're already talking about that. But that is a good way to get some capital projects done that you perhaps can't pay for out of your normal cash reserves. Um, in this report that I will get to you on page seven, I know you don't have it, but on page seven, we actually have a table that shows the estimated revenues by fund. So, that's gonna help you determine what you should be budgeting for each fund, because if you want balanced budgets, obviously you would want to match it up with these estimated revenues. So, I have, I have 2026 on there, but just for your information, I also have 2027, 28, and 29 of estimated revenues, just so you can see what it looks like going out to the future. Um, and so that you can make sure that whatever you're doing in 2026 is sustainable out through, um, the, the 2029 and beyond. Again, these legislative changes are going to impact, um, are gonna be phased in through 2031. So, we, we really have to take a cautious approach, as we're seeing in 2025, when we start working on that 2026 budget, just to make sure that you have sustainable budgets. Um, the rest of the report is the cash flows. If you can't see it, I'm not gonna be able to go through it with you, but maybe I can leave you with a, a few remarks. One is that your cash reserves, if we just focus on the general fund, have been very good over the last three years. Very stable, and of course, we want to sustain that. The city has taken steps to have balanced budgets for the last several years that I've come and talked to you. So, that, that's excellent. But what we want to do is make sure we, we stay, we maintain those reserves and maintain our, our strong cash position going out into the future. I, I think, you know, we will see a, a little bit of a decline in your cash reserves, probably 26 and 27, but once we get to 28, and you're able to adopt that local income tax, um, I think that will help. But we certainly want to try to talk the county into also adopting that fire protection and EMS, because I think that would definitely be a benefit for the city. And we will calculate how much that could generate, so that we can have some conversations with the county council. And, and really, that's what we're seeing all over the state, that we're starting to see where counties are hosting meetings, where everybody's in the same room. When I say everybody, townships, libraries, cities and towns, the fire department, so that everyone has a good understanding of what is needed, because the counties are really gonna have to take a hard look at adopting probably all of these local income taxes. Because if they don't, then there's several types of government that will be, that won't receive any more local income tax. And I don't think they're gonna be able to operate like that. So again, I'm really sorry that I can't share my screen. I, I just couldn't figure it out. And then you don't have the report. I, I said it three times, but apparently, it's not going through your firewalls. There is something, and it won't go through. So, I'll, I'll figure out a way to get it to you, and I will come down there in person.
Any guys, uh, any questions for Paige tonight? Paige, thank you. Sorry, we had difficulties tonight. Um, look forward to getting it, and then we can delve through it a little bit.
Yeah, I totally understand. My apologies. I didn't realize you didn't get it until Dave said something. A couple times today, actually. I, I heard you, Dave. I heard you.
I didn't say anything.
I didn't know you didn't have it, but I will figure it out. I'll probably end up having to create a huddle site, and Dave will probably have to go out onto that site to get it. But I will figure this out. I'll, I'll make sure by tomorrow you get the report.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you Paige again, as always. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Bye-bye.
I think there was a little more clarity than we had from, uh, the last meeting, huh?
Yeah.
Um, look forward to seeing those numbers, when they get the information from the feds. Okay, uh, that gets us through new business down to the claims and the payroll allowance report. Any questions or changes to the claims or payroll allowance report?
The only question I had was, um, where it showed that, that some of these funds was paid back to the generals. Is that just where we're paying, paying back out of that bond?
Where were we at? General?
Yeah. There were several different ones in there that was paid back to the general. There were several different ones in there that was paid back to the general. Oh, so just, uh, in the sewer was like sewage lieu of property August twenty-four per state board of account taxes.
Where at?
Page five of the sewer. There was some in the water. My question is just, was that where we paid it?
I don't see that on.
Uh.
Transfer to the bond?
Yeah, it's like line seven, line seven on page five, water or sewer.
Water.
That was sewer.
I thought you said general. I'm sorry. Sewer?
Yeah, there's one sewer and there's one, there's a line, a couple lines of water. Page four, the water one.
Five is, what's, what's come out? Are you looking at nineteen?
Yeah, nineteen.
That's where you just pay, that's where, just where we put money, the sewer and the water do the, in lieu of property tax. And, and so you know, and if you, any of you come to the audit exit, which you're all, I think you probably got an email today. I got, I'm just gonna say it out loud, I got dinged in, in the audit because I failed to, to transfer August of twenty twenty-four's, so that's why you have two of them. They had, I had to, this is for July of this year, and then I had to move July or August of twenty twenty-four. That's just where we're moving. Instead of paying property tax, just move water, sewer money. Okay, that makes sense?
Yep.
And they're all big because, like the generals, like insurance is big because that's this time.
Right.
All of our insurance come out of this time, and the general is normally, I mean, it's, it's, it's out there because, but you gotta remember that who's your funds in there, and you don't, all you see is the out.
Yeah.
And then if you see the receipts, it just comes right back in. If that makes sense. You had a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, maybe, maybe a hundred and sixty thousand dollars come out for our liability insurance. That help?
Yeah.
Any more questions on the claims or the payroll allowance report? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I like that question.
Okay. Motion by Neil, second by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, any other business by council members?
Um, the other line item on there is accreditation, it says five thousand dollars on it. The rubber that we have over there, the. Price out is cost a couple thousand dollars. Uh, that'll get it. I would also. Guys, think our laptop. I would like to all just use that, have that money right there. Accreditation line item. I don't have any. Talked about was upgrade the property evidence room a little bit. That might be simple as putting a slab of cage up over to close that area up. I'm not gonna. Five thousand.
Okay, is that, is this all safety tax? I can't remember. Is the accreditation safety tax?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five thousand.
I don't know if we can just change it because that's additional appropriations. I'll have to check. I don't see a problem with doing it because you're just moving money. But since we did additional appropriation, I just wanna make sure that.
That's what we do with the ERT.
Well, you haven't done it yet.
Okay.
Because I wanted them to say yes, but I'm just wanna make sure that we can do that.
Yeah.
Since it was additional appropriation and safety tax.
Okay.
So where do we stand on accreditation? I mean, I know that was one of our big things to try to, because of what had been done in the previous achievement to get us to a point where we're gonna get it so that we can apply for federal, federal, I mean, are we still pursuing that? How long do you think it's gonna be? Any idea? I know it's a, I know it's a lengthy process. I know.
Yeah. Probably. Know that we're in a funny pinch now. Been a lot on point. Recommend that. Also gotta get guys fired. Got to start academy today, so hope that works out. Behind the meetings that I'm doing myself, so.
So forget it.
I would hope next year would be a good logical thing, but I say not. Next year, maybe, but that's.
So staffing slows you down, right?
A lot.
So my, I guess my question is, if we do get it, I mean, is there any idea what kind of grants we can get with that, since we're gonna be accredited?
Opens you up federal. Once they tell you, um, all pack.
I guess the reason why I ask is, is if for some reason, I mean, if the safety tax and we're, we're gonna get, the police is gonna get cut out, is, is there gonna be other avenues that we, we pursue at some point?
I'd be glad to look. Sounds like I'm gonna have to. Uh, but yeah, staffing slowed down a little bit with it, uh, not being able to assign guys, help out with the accreditation process. But other than checking on that, I guess.
What do you need, Dave? Is it really for the vote or?
I think the vote with the, say, exception, if, if we can do that, because it's additional appropriation. Is that okay, Jim? Does that work?
You know, Paige, change that name accreditation.
And move in the ERT vehicle to the KNO.
Beamed out motion. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Neil, second by Jan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, thank you, Bobby. Two quick things I had, um, I put in front of you the downtown Princeton um historical, National Historical Register, a new flyer that's been put out. Wanna make sure you guys got a copy of that. And I wanted to announce the July twenty-sixth date that's coming up this weekend for the Backpack Back. So we're looking for volunteers and looking for um donation, so.
I'm sorry, when is it?
Um, this weekend, July twenty-sixth at five PM. Uh, five to six thirty or so, usually goes pretty quickly.
Lafayette or?
Lafayette Park. And we will, uh, we're offering a pool party this year for everyone that participated from six to eight.
And Oasis is involved, that you correct?
Yeah, oh yeah. Good job, Dan. Yeah, shout out to Oasis for helping out with that big time, so. Any, uh, we'll be posting on Facebook, and people can see when to, uh, when and how to get there and how to donate and how to help out. Love to see you guys down. Okay, any other business by council member? Okay, public comment? Any public comment?
Before we, before we start the public comment, I want, I'll say a few words to the council here as your legal representative. Um, the city of Princeton has, um, uh, we have some personnel issues or had some personnel issues, ongoing personnel issues. And, uh, you, you understand the city does not um condone or tolerate any discrimination, whether it be national origin, religious, gender, race, sex, age, disability. We do have handbook policy. We wanna review that handbook policy. Uh, if we need to update it, I'd be open to suggestions. Since we're doing an ongoing investigation and it's still open, uh, city of Princeton, that is, you cannot, cannot comment on any status of any employee or personnel. All right? Uh, rest assured, the city of Princeton will be diligent in its efforts relative to this matter, and will keep the council advised at all step. Do I have any questions for?
No, I just have concern like about keeping informed. Um, I mean, I, I have not been informed of any of these up to this point. Um, I found out secondhand, like most people in the public, and, and to me, I, I don't think that's fair to me as, as a council member. Um, I feel like I was blindsided on some things. People knew about it in the public before I even did, so I just wanted that out there.
Yeah. Uh, anytime you can call me, my phone's always open. You hear something, and maybe I hadn't even heard it yet. I was on vacation last week, so just getting wrapped around it. So, but you can always call me. My phone line's always open for the council. So with that, if you do come to the podium tonight, we ask you, because we are being um live streamed, uh, we need to know your name and address in three minutes. Is that what we talked about, Mr. Magus? Is that correct? Okay.
Okay, public comment?
Patty?
Any public comment?
Patty wants, Patty. You, you up? Yep.
And, uh, I was going to, so what was the? In a group. I don't. That I, but there is. And I know you. Done about it. I can't do that, so I just wanna make sure that until this is. You have lost my business. We go there.
We hear you. I'm clear. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Patty?
New Hope Services. On Thursday. New. Friday. Are available.
What time's the one Friday?
Three.
New Hope, New Hope, ten on Thursday.
Yep.
Amulet, three PM Friday. Thank you.
Something that you guys are able to buy our. Foundation. We already give up. Townships and donations. Go back to school, those that are already in college. Eight, ten states. Have. Some of you guys have buy. Hello, but if you have not. And cost of. Forget. This is value. Patty would like. Stop by the chamber.
Are you gonna have them like at some of the festivals and stuff coming up?
If we don't get them also, I prefer not to. We will be. We will be at the watermelon festival.
Thank you, Patty. Anything else tonight for the council? Anything else by council members? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion by Jan. Second by Bruce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.